Okay. Good afternoon to all and welcome to Citizens in the Gallery. And welcome to our media. And we have Rennie. And we have Corey for Channel 32, or Channel 43?
Both are right.
Depends what you have for service. Okay, we will call a meeting to order on this fourteenth day of October. And we will ask Council members to give us an opening call. Thank you.
Our dear Heavenly Father, we are grateful for the opportunity we have to gather together here this evening as councilors of Towne-Cartson. I ask that Thy Spirit will be here with us to help us to make decisions that are in the best interests of the people who have elected us to office. For these things, we ask Thy for and thank Thy for, in the name of Jesus Christ.
And we have a big announcement. We have a proud Dad who just had a new baby, Jedi, seven pounds, five ounces, healthy, and Mom is happy.
Very good.
And Dad will do a lot of work.
Yeah.
Have a lot of sleepless nights.
What was the name?
Jedi.
Licken people.
Jedi. I thought she said Jedi.
Yeah.
I was thinking.
Jedi.
He's gonna play with you.
Okay. We will need to have a few additions to the agenda. So if you want to look under correspondence, under 11H, we need to add an AUMA letter with temporary workers. Then under 11, we would have to add "I," Mayor and Reeves' letter with temporary workers. And under J, 11J, we will have to add a piece of correspondence from Robert Smith. Okay? I believe under 4C, we will need to add a letter with the ceremony that Councilor Pivoy will share with us. Okay, so with those amendments, we would need to have the agenda adopted.
I move to adopt the agenda as amended.
Thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. We have a few minutes before delegations come. So we're going to look at the adoptions of minutes. We have two different meetings that took place. One, an extraordinary meeting of September the 11th. And do you have any question regarding this minute? No? Okay, seeing none, I need a motion to approve.
I remove the adoption of the special council meeting of September 11th.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Now let's go to the minutes of the regular council meeting of September 16, 2014. You most likely would have to review them. I was glad to reread them because I see I have a to-do for the next mayor's and regarding the library budgeting from the Chinook Arch. So I will do that.
I'll make a motion to accept a minutes.
Okay. Councilor Benquith, move to approve the minutes of September 16 of a regular council meeting. All in favor? Thank you. All right. Since we have 10 extra minutes, why don't we start with requests for decisions? You have from the CCW, a recommendation to really look at the Chinook Arch Regional Library Budget. We had not made a recommendation last time because we felt we might need still to have a little bit of discussion at the table. Welcome to all of you. Well, so glad to have you in our chambers. Thank you. And so my take on that, and Councilor Pivoy, you were the one who were mentioning that last time, saying really, is it right for a council to constantly approve an increase in budget year by year, 3% given just as an increase over four years, without starting to question the wisdom in that? It's not that we don't understand, Councilor Barnes, that we need an increase. It's that, is it a time maybe to start to send a message to the government that for five, six, seven years, I don't know how many years, they have frozen the amount of money? Is it maybe the time for councils through the whole Southern Region to send a common message that it is enough? We need to see some proper funding for our services. And it cannot always fall back onto the municipalities that have constantly need to increase their requisition for library services. My take is, we took a motion at the AUMA that education was really the domain of provincial responsibility. Library education to me goes pretty well hand in hand. So that's a little bit of a question I'm posing. How do you feel about it?
I think we should maybe refer also to the library report. I think there was something in the library report. Did you write that, Dennis?
But that's for the library.
But they talked about funding as well and questioned as whether maybe we should contact other municipalities and see if we want to kind of do a pushback on that.
I did, no, I've done some research and, I mean, we know that they're telling us that it takes 26 out of all the councils to approve the budget. They've already had 21 or 22, so we got five to go. It looks like it's gonna happen. And I don't know that we have much say. We're part of the process and we're part of the thing. If they all approve it, we're, I think, obligated to go. We do not have to approve it. Okay? I'm not, I'm not in any way, shape, or form saying we need to approve a 3% across the board for every year. I've already expressed my concerns at AUMA. I talked with Maggie up there and expressed my concern up there that I didn't feel it was, you know, fair that we should be continually paying.
I'm sure you did that very well, yeah.
But at this point in time, we're not obligated to approve it. If we don't and 26 others do, we're still in pain.
My concern is that are we forever in approving those budgets year by year, increasing the way they are? Are we sending as a group of municipalities a message to the government, guess what? Municipalities still have money and we don't need your money. We don't need... The message we're sending, is that the message we want to send?
I think we need to send a message that we can't keep on burdening the taxpayer for that extra money.
Okay, how do you do it unless you disapprove?
Well, I, well, we, like I said, we need to get out there. I think we need to communicate to the rest of the, to the rest of the councils that we need to, as a body, let the government know. Now, they did bring it up at AUMA, the municipal fair did say that they were looking at increased funding for libraries. That's what she said. How many of you heard it?
Yeah.
You all heard that, all right?
Yeah, it was.
So now, I think what we need to do maybe as a council, we need to draft a letter saying we need it sooner than later.
Okay. When we talked about the minute, I had a to-do list. And the to-do list is to bring this item at the table for mayors and reeves.
I think that would be an excellent idea.
My only trouble is, when does this need to be approved?
Fourteenth of November.
Okay, so we have one meeting with mayors and reeves before, now I'm there. Do you want to not make the decision now and see what the plan is?
I don't want maybe this incident today. I'm not prepared to make that motion.
So do you want to table that to?
The next meeting. Or after your mayor's?
Months after we have mayors and reeves?
Yeah, after you have mayors and reeves.
Okay, would that be okay? Last table, maybe, Councilor Benquith, did I ignore you? I'm sorry.
My concern was, Councilor Barnes, there's 39 member communities. I did not hear they say that they had 26 except for the budget.
No, they have to have 26.
Two of them.
Two accepted. As of two weeks ago, 21 had approved it.
But 21 is still 26.
So you got 18 more to go that probably they're gonna get their other in five.
I agree though that not approving this budget sends a pretty strong message.
Yeah.
Because actually, she, she made a point of noting that one had not, you know, one municipality had already come back having rejected this proposal. I think it might be worth looking at being a second municipality who does not accept it. And then maybe that would help them reconsider next year, maybe, you know.
What we need to do though, is send a letter, depending on the outcome, once I come back from mayors and reeves, if it's a down deal. What we need to do is to send a message if we then vote against that budget increase to Chinook Arch and explain, it's not that we don't approve better quality services, that's not the point. The point is that we do not approve constant increase to our budget that forces our requisition to go up and up and up. And as at a town, to always go to administration and say, you need to trim our services by 3% because you can't take anymore than what you're given.
That's right. They're absolutely right.
All right, so we shall table it.
So when will that, when will that meeting be?
It's normally mid-month, so I will let you know.
Make a motion.
I need a motion. Yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we table that until after the mayor's reeves meeting in October.
In October. Yeah, thank you. All right. Thank you.
All in favor?
All in favor? Thank you. All right. We now come to the wonderful time of 5:15. And we have Alexis Bussi, so we're going to go back to our delegation. And Alexis is going to come to the podium. And we welcome that wonderful group of grade 12 students from our local high school. They are part of our Mayor's Youth Council. I'm excited to work with them because I can see in them the training for future leadership. And I'm very pleased to have such a wonderful group of young women, no, young men, but it's okay. You make up all the wrong. So Alexis, if you want to.
Things are okay with that.
Good.
Well, thank you for letting me come and say a few words. I'm here basically just to introduce the members of our Mayor's Youth Council and to give you a little bit more of an explanation as to what we're trying to do this year. As well as, we thought it'd be a great opportunity for the members to actually sit and watch part of the council proceedings just so they can see how it actually happens, so they have a bit of a reference point when they move forward. So I'm first just gonna name off our members. Not all of them are able to attend tonight due to other obligations, but the ones who are in attendance will just raise their hand when I say their name. So we have Madison Tailfeathers, Alyssa Olson, Azley Watson, Tanny Quentin, Mariah Blood, Dakota Daychief, Bethany Conrad, Rebecca Fox, and Nikki Tombold. I'm sorry if I pronounced that wrong. I was practicing it earlier just because that T is kind of, anyway. So Cara Baldwin, she's the teacher at the high school who's helping us with this course. Really, if she wasn't helping us, we went up and helped to make it a reality at this point. She's been fundamental in getting the members involved, as well as allowing us to use her classroom during lunchtime, which is when we normally meet once a month. And without her help, we would still be struggling to format exactly how we'll be running the program, so she was really instrumental in that. The Mayor's Youth Council throughout the year, so that's the school year, will be meeting 11 times. Eight of those meetings are lunchtime meetings, which will be sort of a mayor's, like an actual council format. And then those three other meetings will be them attending town council sessions as being the first. The goal of the Mayor's Youth Council is to provide a channel through which the voices of local youth can be heard. And we'll be encouraging participants to develop personal and professional skills. We will help them to understand the importance and function of local government, as well as their own potential leadership. We'll be focusing on three main things at each of the meetings. The first one is helping them gain a better understanding of the roles of local government and how they themselves can become future leaders. The second is, they get to identify two issues throughout the year where they're going to kind of research into it, things that affect them. And they'll be bringing them to council as a recommendation. The first one in February and the second one in June. Now I guess it's entirely up to council if how they want to take that recommendation, but it's a good way for a local youth to be heard. The third item that we'll be working through is the Seven Habits of Highly Effective Teams. Each of the members have received the Seven Habits book and the workbook. And each session will be discussing a different portion of the habits. The Mayor's Youth Council is being funded through the Cartson District FCSS budget as a youth program. So we've provided each of them with the books and with a little portfolio that they can use to take notes in and it's kind of marked down all the different things that they learn, as well as a binder just like this one where they can keep all their agendas and their background informations for each of the meetings. So that's basically all I had prepared. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes and let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any question? Councilor Pivoy?
How were the members of your council chosen?
Well, it was really just by people wanting to be involved. So Cara Baldwin put it out during each of her social classes and said, if anybody, correct me if I'm wrong, if anybody's interested, they can write their name down and we'll invite them to the first meeting and just get going that way.
It's very commendable that they step forward also.
Yeah. Councilor Creed?
I'd just like to comment that I had an experience when I was about the age of these girls in high school. And they chose some of the youth in scouting who had achieved their Queen Scouts and other awards. And I got to be the mayor at that time. And other scouts were to the council. And we actually got to sit around the council table and kind of be shadow council. And I actually remember at the council meeting was the time that they approved the development permit for K and D implements. I still remember that. I would hope that maybe at one of the council meetings that they attend, that the girls can have the opportunity to do that, to actually sit around the council table with us. And as though they were councilors, I think that would be a great experience. So just like to make that as a suggestion.
Can I just give you an idea? At the very first meeting, they elected a mayor. Who's the mayor? There we go. And we have a deputy mayor. Is the deputy here today? No?
She's not here.
All right. So they had to vote on the agenda. And they also were given the next step as how we move it forward to the next meeting. So that's already moving along the real way.
I just want to commend you girls. I was your age in grade 12 in our high school when we had, we had a student government body, which is the Student Council. But we also had the Principals Council, which I was chosen to be on the Principals Council to make sure that our student council were doing their job. And that's where I got my first taste of government. And ever since then, I've had a keen, you know, desire to make sure the government is right. And I commend you girls for that. It's exciting to see you here.
Councilor Benquith?
Alexis Cindy Gold of the Mayor's Youth Council says, "To provide a channel through which the voices of local youth can be heard." Can you embellish that a little bit more or expand on that? What voices are we gonna be hearing?
That's actually kind of entirely up to how we proceed during our next few meetings. As I mentioned, the Mayor's Youth Council will choose an issue that they identify with, which they kind of want to do a little bit more research in, and that they will decide together what their collective voice is and bring it to the council. Now, depending on, we're gonna encourage them to try and get feedback from their fellow students, but we're still working out the kinks, sorry.
Alexis?
Are you going to be concerned about such topics as bullying, Facebook, multimedia, things like that?
That's a good question. Actually, our Economic Development Board wrote out a list of topics that they felt might be of interest to our Mayor's Youth Council. And it did include bullying, included things like the skateboard park, job opportunities for youth, recreation facilities that we might be missing in the town, all like large-scale things that they might be interested in. And I've asked them to read through it. And at our next meeting, they're going to identify either one of those or one that I didn't list, because that's very likely a possibility as well. And we'll just move on from there.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Mayor, before I go, if that's okay, I just wanted to mention that our Mayor's Youth Council, they all, some of them have things they have to get to after this. They'll slowly be trickling out, so just a heads up if you notice people.
You're more than welcome. We won't hold it against you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for this wonderful presentation. I'm quite excited to work with this group of young people. It's very wonderful. Okay, we need to have our next delegation come forward. We're a few minutes early, but that's wonderful. We have Heather Tate and Brent Cawman, if you'd like to come and help us with this very exciting, timely project.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council, for letting us come and speak to you today. I know you've had a background on what we're gonna talk about, and I've also given you another letter that I'd like to read today for behalf of those in the congregation here and those on Channel 32 watching. "We represent a small group of citizens who have built a need to help mend the rift that has occurred in our town during a recent flood site. On this small community formed by locals, we have people who are on both sides of the questions. They have come together in ways to not only help to men, but also help our local businesses. We represent Christmas in Cartson. We have big goals for this project, but realize we must start small and grows our vision progresses. We are organizing two events, a festival of lights and a festival of trees for this coming Christmas season, which we hope takes place on December 1st of this year, which is a Monday night. We will be having this at the Remington Carriage Center. We are just starting ourselves to fundraise for these events. First off, the festival of lights, as it implies, we wish to see our town covered in Christmas lights. We have many aspects to this event. One is to have all the trees on Main Street lit up. We understand provisions were put in place to have electrical to each of these trees. We have also been encouraging our local temple president to seek permission from Salt Lake to have our temple decorated, much like the Temple Square is. We will be asking our local businesses to go the extra mile in decorating their storefronts in lights, as well as have more of the residents in town lighting up their homes. The goal is to be known as a town with the festival of lights. As we said before, we know we must start small. The Remington Carriage Museum has graciously agreed to help start this trend by having as many trees as possible on their property decorated in lights. We are asking for the town to help in donating some lights and the equipment, and some manpower in helping decorate these trees. We know in past, we've had a 30-foot-plus tree on Main Street in the intersection there. We also know that we can't do this anymore. But we'd like to start a new tradition by having the town get this tree and bring it to the Remington Carriage Center. And then we'll have a central spot located for it, a lighting and a little ceremony. We'd also like to ask the town to go the extra mile in decorating the Card Home on Main Street with some more lights and on the trees and on the home itself. We do have some manpower and equipment ready lined up to help with this, but we need the town to help as well. We envision all these lights being turned on at once at our other event we are working on called the Festival of Trees. The Festival of Trees will be held same time at the Remington Carriage Center, hopefully around 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Here we'll have local choirs perform Christmas carols, an outside dance around a bonfire, entertainment in the theater, a kids' gingerbread house contest, and some simple food options such as hot chocolate, popcorn, et cetera. One of the highlights will be having Santa arriving and to ceremonies, they throw the switch to turn on all the lights at the Remington Carriage Center and hopefully on Main Street as well. Another event will be having our, have our local Festival of Trees is where local clubs, organizations, businesses, and fellow residents who have previously purchased artificial trees, decorate them and donate them to the festival, where they'll be on display and prizes will be awarded for first, second, and third place. Then these trees will be auctioned off by a local auctioneer to help in the funding of future Christmas lights to help decorate for the town of Cartson. We will be going to other shrine in towns, getting members from their communities to help enter decorated trees, which we hope will help in the promotion of this by word of mouth through those towns and bring their families to our town to see the lights and hopefully stay for a while. I have mentioned these festivals in general to the communities in Bloom and the Chamber Commerce and to the President of Economic Development, which all thought it was worthwhile to help, worthwhile event to help promote. Unfortunately, these communities have already met this month before we had a chance to get our facts together. So in recap here, things we're asking for the town of Cartson help for is finding approximately a 30-foot or higher tree to bring to the Remington Carriage Museum, set it up and have lights for it, looking for money to help purchase lights for other trees there, equipment and manpower to help decorate trees at the Remington Carriage Center, decorating more at the Card Home, putting electrical to the trees on Main Street and decorating them with lights. I kind of envision old white lights there, these appear in the summer. And then promoting home and business owners to decorate their lights, their properties of lights, and hopefully supplying us with some prizes, such as swinging passes, things like that the town can maybe own.
Thank you very much for this presentation. I almost can't see it in my eyes, which is a wonderful thing. Heather, do you have anything else you would like to add?
I just had to answer questions.
Okay. My, my question to you is because it's not a project, the project as an idea, I think, I can see the excitement around the table towards a project. I think the project is a worthwhile project. I'm just looking at the scope of it. Between now, we, October, and December is around the corner. And my concern also is that we don't have any money budgeted for this event in our budget right now. Doesn't mean that we can find some. We can always rob Peter to pay for, but some, a bit, but not much. So I am wondering if maybe what we need to come up with is in year one, kind of think stages, okay? I don't know that we can realize all this year, but I really think what we can do is some this year and maybe build on that to make it bigger and grander as time goes on and as we're able to budget money for that very worthwhile purpose. There's a lot of things that can be done because as you mentioned, you would like the merchants to participate, you would like some of the town to participate, some of the project I can see being done this year. But what I really think needs to be done is maybe if you were to work with administration to try to figure out a little bit, how do we chunk it so that it fits what we have for resources, manpower, and make it work?
Sure.
Would that make sense?
It does. I did speak with Jeff and when I spoke to him about the different, the big things that we were hoping the town could help us with, he said that there was already provisions and some room left in some of the budgets so that hopefully it would be able to happen. Some of those things that we talked about were, there's a competition that the town hosts, has hosted in the past.
Yes, exactly.
For the decorating of the homes and there was a cash prize for that. We're hoping that the town will continue that this year. And then we'll help in advertising that that will take place.
That was from the community.
So that was one. And then the second one was the Christmas tree. He explained to me that it was just a project that if somebody in town had a tree that needed to be removed, they would donate the means for it to be removed out of their yard and then they'd stick it wherever. So it didn't sound like it was maybe too much trouble or too much out of the way. He said that sounded very realistic. The day before I had talked to him, he had spoken to Leonard Butler about the lighting up the trees on Main Street. He said there was some problems with the, it hadn't been worked. And so he hadn't heard back yet what the condition was there, if that was even a possibility or not for this year. So that was an ify thing. And then the, the other... So that was an ify thing. And then the other thing that we were looking at, the big thing that we were hoping for was just, and I just don't know the logistics of it, but the possibility of using town equipment, like the boom trucks. But I understand that they have to be used by certified people and the safe, you know, all the safety and all that. And so that would have to come out of a town budget for an employee to be there physically helping us string lights at the high levels. Those are kind of the big things that we're hoping to see this year. And then like you said, build on.
Yeah.
We know we have to start small.
Yeah, but I'm glad that you present a big scope of a project, because it helps us understand where you're going with that. Counselor Ben.
Mayor Crowell, as we look over the budgets and decipher some of the things that have or haven't done, Counselor Pivoy and I were just checking in on the grant, was it a grant that we received that we never used, possibly we could move some of it?
Which grant are we talking about?
It was the grant that was granted to the Agribill for the ex-society for their event that was that canceled. You know, it's a matter of...
Normally, when you have a grant, it is earmarked for a specific purpose, unless I'm wrong.
It's for event funding.
Okay, all right.
Now, I'm sure if I could, that would be the Opportunities Initiative?
Right.
So there could potentially be some funding in that budget as well.
All right, so.
And also if administration could look at Finance Item 251-770.
Which is, what account is that?
It's called Midyear Requests.
That's an FCS, I guess that's what it's called, yeah. All right, so.
I just want to, I want to make a comment. I want to, I want to get you excited about the possibility even more than you are. I lived in a small town in Southern Ontario. We used to have a Santa Claus parade all the time. Every kid looked forward to that Santa Claus parade. It was wonderful. Then, with the wisdom of the Town Council, they canceled the Santa Claus parade. The town maintenance crew, who helped a lot with the building the floats, and they housed the floats in the town shops and stuff like that. Well, the park's maintenance manager was just really ticked. He was upset. He took all those floats and put them in the middle of the ballpark that we had right down there, and he went amongst the town employees and asked for donations, and they lit up every one of those floats and just parked them out in the middle. Now, 52 years later, that is the largest single Christmas panorama in the whole of Southern Ontario and east from Nova Scotia. It is a fabulous panorama. They have it every year. It's big. They open it up with a big fireworks display at nighttime, and they have Santa there, and they light it up, and oh, it's fabulous. And I'm talking about acres of trees throughout the park system now. It's fabulous, and I absolutely love it. It's a great idea.
Counselor Ben, it's a wonderful idea. I have wonderful memories of a wonderful festival of lights in New York.
The great formula for this is it's citizens taking this on initiative.
The only thing is, we don't want to make administration tremble too much.
She's excited too.
Okay, so are we, are we all right to recommend for Mr. Cavan and Mrs. Jeff to?
I'd love to make that recommendation.
Cavan, please.
We direct administration to help them with this, to find some funds and go for it.
Manpower.
Manpower, etc.
Can we tweak the wording of that motion?
Just word it up, just a little bit. Go for it. Yeah, it's doing. It happened.
Essentially, that's the word in properly, so we have young people learning how to do it right.
My recommendation is that the administration look into the possibility of funding for this Christmas Festival Lights Project and to get the help from the town crews to help set up the lights when it happens. And that's basically my motion.
Maybe you want to put a festival of lights and a festival of trees?
And the festival of lights and the festival of trees, yeah. Add them both in there.
All right. Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Any other question, discussion?
Since the Remington Center is kind of hosting these events, is there, have they committed to some funding from the Center to help?
They haven't committed to any funding because they've used their budget for the year.
They'll pay the electrical bill.
They will pay the electrical bill, and they're already, I know, that's big enough, and the use of the grounds. They have, already have an art festival going on that night. So it's good for them because we'll help add to their, to their current festival going on. So we're trying to work and collaborate together to make it work for everybody. So yeah, they'll pay the bill.
Counselor Ben.
Now, does our hospital still have the decorated trees that they auction off?
I do not know.
That's the Festival of Trees. So the concept of the Festival of Trees is we're asking, like we've asked for help for businesses and residents to light everything up. But in conjunction with that, we want to have a little festival of trees happening at Remington. It'll happen a week previous to our big lighting ceremony, so that brings foot traffic in through town and at the Remington Center. And how that works is we go to clubs, organizations, groups, families, whoever wants to participate, Town Carstston, whoever, and what they do is they donate a decorated tree. Then, the night of the auction, what happens is we go around, we're going to have a secret committee that will judge, and then we have some big prizes that we're hopefully going to get ahold of to award the winning, how we designate, what the, you know, the winners will be. So you will enter the competition that way, and then we'll auction those trees off. And then that way, whoever buys the tree can take that tree home and have it in their business or their home or their classroom room, whoever it is, on display for the month of December. And then what we anticipate is to use those funds to dump into next year's project. So buying more lights, and keep doing that. Our long-term goal is to get so that we become a profitable, non-profit organization, so that we can actually donate to things in the community. So if there's like a piece of playground equipment, a piece of hospital equipment, there's something that Carstston residents are going to see benefit from, then we as a committee can put that money out there for the residents once, you know, things are a little more established. Because lights, you don't have to buy for a year. It's something that you just have to build on.
Quick comment. You might consider asking the business people if they wouldn't mind having a donation box and so citizens can donate. That's how they funded a lot of the project there, and they still do, and they get thousands of dollars every year.
That's a great suggestion.
Well, you know, like donating Christmas lights.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, that's great. Just real quick, it seems like they've done this before with the festival. I remember a bunch of trees in the tourist information center that they were decorated and they were auctioning off. Do you know who did that?
I think that was done by one of the young women in organizations.
Oh, okay. But I know they did that previous years. I don't know how successful it was.
I believe Lori Brooks was in charge of that.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion on the table. We need to vote on the motion. Are you in favor? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for your presentation. It's very exciting to us all. All right, Counselor Pivoy, would you please give us a little bit of background and report on a wonderful cultural event that took place about, what, two weeks ago, three weeks ago?
Ali kicks in. Well, thank you. We had a headdress. Help me out here with this word. I've written it down. It was a repatriate, repatriation.
It was a re-gifting.
Re-gifting. So the headdress, the history of the headdresses, it was given by members of the Blood Tribe to honor the honorary chieftainship of Charles O'Raard's son, Joseph Youngard. And he received that many, many years ago. The family has a written history of that.
Turn the light down there.
We are hoping to get a copy of the written history from Charles, or excuse me, from Joseph Young, and a little more detail as to how that came to be, right, and how that relationship, we have just bits and pieces, really. And so at the ceremony, we invited, of course, the, well, just to back up. In 2009, Ruth Ashby of the Card Descendants, Joseph Young's great-grand, no, excuse me, just granddaughter. Great-grand.
Daughter.
His daughter. All right, so she's aged in a good way. I think she was 92 at the time. She was bringing her father's headdress to Carstston to gift it to the town. And she was stopped at the border. The border patrol doesn't allow eagle feathers just to lightly cross the international line there, and it was confiscated. And it was then given from the border patrol to the Blood Tribe. They said, clearly, this is for you guys to sort out. So the Blood Tribe...
Dexter Brewsehead.
Dexter Brewsehead, Counselor Dexter Brewsehead, the chief and counsel of the Blood Tribe. He received the headdress and kept it in his possession under his protection for five years, waiting until the time would be appropriate and the ceremony could be planned, where it would then be gifted to the town. As we're going to see here in just a moment, to celebrate this incredible event, we just have a quick minute segment here of some of the dancers that we have in various categories, almost a mini powwow right in our carriage theater, carriage house theater. So go ahead, and we'll just take a minute to enjoy the fantastic talent, art, artistry, and culture. During the ceremony, each of those dancers was able to go up individually and perform their various dances. Afterwards, my wife and I driving home, as impressive as all of that was, I'm sorry. No, we have two more quick videos. My wife and I discussing it on the way home said of all of the beauty that we saw that day and the talent that we saw, the people we were actually most impressed with were those two singers and the drumming family. It sounded like there were 15 guys. And if you were there, there was this amazing echo, and you just looked up, and there was just the two of them. We were so impressed with those two guys. And of course, you know, they weren't dressed fancy. It was just t-shirts and jeans and their little drum. And just the talent from those guys was spectacular.
A little child drummer.
Oh, yeah, his son, one of their sons was joining in. He never missed a beat, that kid. He never missed a beat. He could have done it on his own, without his dad and his uncle there. Anyway, we, it was a beautiful, beautiful display, and it was an honor to be there to see it. Special kudos while we're talking to Russell Red Crowe, who was our announcer that night. He did a fantastic job representing the spirit of what was happening there as the, because this whole event represented the union and dependence of the two cultures, the town of Carstston and the Blood Tribe, our neighbors. And so Dexter Brewsehead, Counselor Brewsehead, spoke a little bit about that. And so I've got a moment here that I'd like just to reference. His words, so important that we really understand, we really listen here to understand what the meaning was of this ceremony. So we can see that now.
So with that, if I could just address this in Carstston. We have, we have a neighborhood or a neighboring relationship that would take a break. The generations today, do they understand how close this town to be? Do they understand that just down the street here, the reservation, actually, the boundary is not that street? The boundary goes further down into Wyoming. How Carstston has come to be is something maybe we don't fully understand, or I know, but it's so important if we can just try to grasp it. Because how are two people living so close together so far apart? Why isn't that the word racism, discrimination so evident? This headdress, when a person is given a headdress, it goes so far beyond anything that in English word, as far as racism and discrimination, it's all the one. You do normally give a headdress to just anyone, especially from a tribal member to a non-tribal member. There was such a strong relationship so many years ago. It's probably gone. But that piece of history is right here. It has a way to describe inside its development. Giving a brief description of that history. So why do I want us to be the protectors of this piece of history? It's an honor to myself, to my wife, my two boys in the partners, because I believe that relationship between us has been re-examined, strengthened. But we must learn to know that we are partners and our papers. Most recently, this family study is completed in your name. Twenty-two million, a year spent through evolution by our people. That twenty-two million each of them. It helps you put food on the table, it helps you buy a meal, it helps you spend life, bring kids, big grandkids. These things go like my parents. I'd like to just allow you to think about that for a second before we begin, because there's a piece of history here. This piece of history was given with a self-love and so strong. You can't forget those things. You know, you and I can always like to say, you know, I can always say, that's the only thing we have today.
So again, the emphasis from their, the representative from their council was that the relationship needed to be considered and strengthened. And I think that that should really be listened to by this council so that that feeling, they recognize that that feeling is mutual. Next, just the last little video that we have here is the actual gifting of the headdress. The way that it was put together, and I really appreciated how this was done. It was gifted from the Brewsehead family back to the Pantherbone family, who they believe...
And it's a transfer of this historical...
Let's see it here. No, no, go ahead. This is the actual transfer ceremony.
...into the honorary chieftainship, which includes historical names as the Prince of Wales, who's still with us, Prince Charles, when it is, there's now a line, reaching up to Arthur. I've all been a part of this society, of the honorary chieftainship, and repatriated from that friendship, you know, to the Pantherbone man. It was represented here by the ancestor, that relationship of the hard and natural, Martin Gordenow. The headdress was originally transferred to J.Y. Carter, who was the son of Charles O'Raard. And from that friendship, and he had the peers of the Blood Tribe because of the close proximity of our people. We give to him this piece right here, this beautiful headdress, which we will return, and it's not our way to keep things that we have given to our other people, to our friends of the tribe. It's not our way to keep those things. So we're going to re-patriate back to the... So we're going to re-patriate back to the Heart Family at this time here, as the granddaughter, Eda Ashby, representing the Heart Family, behind here in the headdress will be repatriated here from the Pantherbone family to the Heart Family one more time. It's a very emotional time, I believe, for all of all the families involved in this historical day here in Alberta. In turn, the Heart Family would like to gift this to all the citizens of the County of Alberta. And we will repatriate it here this time, so we'll repatriate it here to Mayor Cronin. It hasn't been designated where this historical beast will sit, the County Council will meet on, but we'll have a rest of the place that is fitting for its historical significance. On this, this quarter day here in Alberta, as we kick off the cultural awareness week in our province, now is the annualization of all the citizens and the descendants of our neighbors that are part of us as well, and it would have been sent out over the contributions that we have given, from our communities to yours, and we hope that this helps rebuild our relationships with the American community. So ladies and gentlemen, this historical beast now belongs to all of you.
There is, in my opinion, a great responsibility that comes in being the guardian of that headdress. I'm sure that this council and future council meetings will discuss and decide the best way to display and honor that gift to this town. I have a letter here from one of the descendants of Joseph Young Card, I believe it was his, I'll double check here, I think it's his grandson. Anyway, he says this, "Honorable Mayor Cronin and Council, thank you for the great honor extended to me to be invited to the special gift headdress ceremony to be held the 26th of September. This meant a lot to me because in 1945, I was invited to Browning, Montana, to be made an honorary chief in the place of my father, Joseph Young." So this is Joseph Young Card. This would be years later, 1945. We estimate the, the age of the headdress in question to be, Graham, how old do we think that was?
Nineteen twenties?
Nineteen twenties, roughly, than that original headdress that you saw in the video. And then now, again, 1945, to be made an honorary chief in place of his father down in Browning. About that time, I had also made an application to the Purum Young University. When word came to me that the day for freshmen's to, to register was the same day I was to be in Browning, I felt sad because it would have been a great honor to accept this award. So here is Joseph Young Card's son. He, he missed his opportunity to be inducted in as an honorary chief. Enclosed is a photo of me, though, wearing a headdress when I was in my late teens. Please let this represent me at the ceremony and...
Can you show it to the gallery?
Yeah, absolutely. I, I don't believe this is the headdress of his father. This is a different headdress that he was wearing. And he says, "Please accept this picture as the representation of me at the ceremony. I will be there, but at age eighty-eight, I am experiencing health problems which prevent me from attending. I want you to know that I grew up in the best place in the world. There were great role models and people who were very unselfish with their time and service to the town and to each other. Lifelong friendships were formed, not only with the people of Cardston, but also with my brothers and sisters on the reservation. Thank you for keeping this heritage and legacy alive in the community. My life history should be in the town library. If not, please notify me and I will send them a copy. It tells quite vividly how wonderful it was for a young boy to grow up in the friendly environment I enjoyed in Cardston. Every best wish to you and your associates, and may heaven look kindly upon you as leaders in Cardston. Sincerely, Lincoln John Card."
Thank you very much, Councilor Bevo. You did great honor to this event. Okay, there is something we need to maybe talk about for a couple minutes. Marian is the person in town that is working towards having the proper display for this beast, this headdress, because it needs to have a proper protective, protective casing, and because of the material, it needs to have some kind of heat control, humidity control. So we need to make sure that we do it right. So it's going to take a little bit of time, but it will be done. And that picture will be framed and mounted and the story will be included also. So thank you so very much. It was a very emotional event.
There wasn't a dry eye here that much.
And happy to realize how much work we have to do. So we will. Okay, that's good. Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you so much. So we, a little bit ahead of the key, we will ask David Johnson, who is here with his wife and their wonderful little baby, that is just a week old, also Eden, a little girl, and proud daddy. So it's wonderful. Thank you so much, Mr. Johnson, for coming today.
You bet. Thank you. And that was a very good presentation. I was also, was able to, it was an honor to be there, and it was, I think it was a good timing for all. I'm here, just, I think with the recent plebiscite, I just felt like I should maybe say a few words about that. I know it got a lot of attention everywhere. And being that it was non-binding, to me, that means a lot of things. I think if it would have been binding, you all wouldn't even be worried about voting on it because it'd just be the law, it'd be what everyone in the community said to do. But the fact that it's non-binding, I just have a question for the council. If there was any one of those proposition ideas that was asking a question of the community, and if you didn't feel like when they were put on the plebiscite, that you could go along with the majority, then my question to you would be, why would you ever put it out as a plebiscite? So I just wanted to remind the council of their democratic duty. Public has spoken, even on all of them. They, you know, no matter how small you thought the issue was, or big you thought it was, whether it was hens, or fluoride, or alcohol, or whatever, I would just say, I hope you'll just follow your conscience and that you will also, when you vote, that you will vote as the majority in this community vote, on all of them. Don't cherry pick, don't, you know, go and do anything different. And I'm just here to remind you, as a public citizen, as a citizen of this community, that that, I believe, is your duty. And not that you were going to do anything different, I'm sure you'll all vote the way the majority voted, but I just wanted to remind you that that's, I believe, why the community showed up the way we did, to vote and say how we felt about things. And so I don't really have much more to say other than that. And I'm grateful for all your efforts of what you're doing. I'm grateful that you had the courage to put the plebiscite out in first place. But I just hope that we'll stick with what the majority said to do and not go and think that maybe, you know, there's other ways to approach it other than the, the way the majority said to do it. And I mean on every last one. If there's one of them, you don't go along with the majority, it will have a detrimental effect, not only maybe on getting elected, but also on the whole plebiscite thing. Because why would people come and vote on a plebiscite in the future if the council votes differently than the way the majority said to do it? So that's just something to think about. At least I wouldn't, you know, if, if I voted and the majority said, do this, and you voted differently than that, then the next time a plebiscite comes up, they'd say, well, council, hey, don't even vote the way the majority's going to vote anyway, so why waste my time going and voting for an non-binding plebiscite? So it's just some things to think about. There's smiles on your faces, and I wasn't expecting anything other than just, you know, that, but I think that that's just something that, that should definitely be a reminder to those that now vote in the real sense on all of those issues. I don't have anything else to say other than, any questions?
Dave, thank you very much for that, two bits worth of wisdom from a citizen of our town. I appreciate that very much. You took the time to come, you have a young baby, it means a lot to me. And we have, in the course of our work at council, the plebiscite questions we're going to review, and the fluoride motion that has been put forward, and we will then debate, and your words are well taken. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay, we will carry on with our recommendations. We have on the seven, two, MP Jimmy Hillier meeting request. I have different documents that have been given to you. One you could see is regarding the temporary workers. There is some item there that are fairly confidential in nature. I would like you to kind of keep them for that. I gave that to you because I contacted two businesses that employ a fair amount of temporary workers. Mountain View Industries has twenty-five of them, Subway, I said, there's ten of them. So I wanted to make sure that you were private to the conversation I had. This goes along, much of what is said in here goes along with the letters that we wrote as Mayor and Reeve. I was the originator of the motion, and the letter from Mayor's and Reeve has been drafted in order to represent the issue of shortages of labor in Southern Alberta that needs to be presented and been heard at the federal level. And we also included for you the AUMA position on the temporary worker with support also what we did as Mayor's and Reeve. Any questions, Councilor Bantry?
I believe as Councilor Barnes and myself attended the, when we were attending the AUMA, we did attend a...
Session?
A session put on about temporary workers. It is a very strong forwarding question to the, to the two...
Ministers.
Ministers in charge, MacGyver and who was the other one, Councilor Barnes, that, that something had to be done, and they were supposed to be representing the province of Alberta federally.
Right. And Mr. Plantis has also had a release since, since then, and very much in favor of starting to find a more provincial solution to our shortage, as one shoe doesn't fit all. That policy was originated in Ontario and doesn't reflect the shortage of unskilled labor that we have in our province and in our towns. So that I'll give you a little bit of follow-up here. As for the other items that are with, for Mr. Hillier, I think they are self-explanatory. Okay? So there is a date that we have that was given to us by way of email, and if I remember right, Marian, was November the tenth, am I correct? Hold that out, sorry, I have to check. One day... One was in October, but it's too, too close to that year, I have it there. So one Thursday, October sixteenth is, is too close, and MP Hillier would just be coming back from Edmonton, from Ottawa, sorry. And so the other date was Monday, November the tenth, in the morning or afternoon is... I would like to know how many of you could possibly make it at that November, November tenth, morning or afternoon, whatever is preferable to you. I am available either...
The tenth is the Friday, right? No, no, that's not Monday.
It's a Monday.
Okay, here we go, Monday.
Let's just, let's just pick a time and say, are you going to be available for the afternoon meeting, period? Let's not go with, with a morning or an afternoon, let's just say, are we going to have a meeting in the morning or the afternoon?
Okay. Would you like to propose that, and that we do it November the tenth in the afternoon?
You bet.
And that administration decide all the time?
Yes.
And communicate that? How many of you could make it at that meeting? Okay, so all of us, perfect, thank you.
Does it mean with, with MP Hillier?
Please, yes. Okay, wonderful, thank you so much. So we can put this one to rest. Okay, MGA review. I just want to remind council that this Saturday, we are having a work session from ten to two here in our civic chamber. And what I really would like council to, to do is to have reviewed those fifty-one questions or so, I think fifty-one? Yes, Marian, you want to?
Chairman, I also uploaded a document today, which was the AUMA submission on the MGA review, just for reference as well for Saturday.
Thank you. Okay, so you have two documents, you have the document from KPM, and you have the AUMA document.
Oh, that's from ten o'clock in the morning, right?
Yeah, ten to two. So if you remember, yeah, if you remember, there was, on that, on that document, that document was created after all the sessions that we had, consultation sessions through the province. So it's not a time to really rehash everything, it's a time to make decisions for a town as to what makes more sense, option A, option B. If we need to really come up with an absolutely extraordinary, different type of option, we will need to, we could entertain it, but I really think that Alberton's, Alberta municipality as a whole have already expressed a feeling for A or B. So let's see what we would like the government to hear, A or B, and then hopefully it will guide in the drafting of the MGA. Okay? So please be prepared. Next is the letter to Dexter, Councilor Dexter Brewseth. We had said that we were, okay, sorry, Marian?
We just need a motion?
Oh, I'm so sorry.
A special meeting of council, please?
Yes, you are exactly right, because it needs to be advertised.
I'll make the motion that we have, that special meeting on October the twenty-fifth. Is that the one we're talking about? Or the Brewseth one?
No, no. It's not going to be the twenty-fifth, what is that?
Oh, it's eighteen?
No, 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 no.
Well, this one upcoming, Saturday.
This Saturday.
MGA, October the eighteenth.
Yeah, Saturday. Don't confuse me. Sorry. That doesn't take much.
Okay.
Okay, so?
October the eighteenth, ten to two.
No, twenty-fifth.
No, it's eighteen. It's this Saturday. It's coming Saturday.
Don't push it.
Are you sure?
Absolutely.
I've embedded in my calendar for the twenty-fifth.
Just drop it, Monday earlier, just an error. We do make such...
I make this date?
Never.
Okay. I make that motion.
Okay, so, thank you. So you want to go again with your motion?
Make the motion that we made here in council chambers, Saturday, October eighteenth, between ten and two, to discuss the MGA review.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Letter to Councilor Brewseth? Oh, yeah, sorry, all in favor, you see? Now you're confusing me, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna do some new research.
All right. We need to, we said we were going to send a letter to Councilor Dexter Brewseth. Do you want me to draft it?
You're good at that.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
May I say, very good at that.
Oh, it's important, it is. We need a motion to do that, too, Councilor Bree?
I will make a motion that we send a letter to Dexter Brewseth thanking him for his facilitating of the headdress, gifting it back to the town of Cardston.
Thank you very much.